It says it's been recorded, but it didn't say that.
Yeah, it's not been doing that lately.
Okay, so we're good.
We're being recorded.
Okay, wonderful. Um, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, May sixth. Like to call the meeting to order and our county clerk will do roll call.
Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Noel.
Here.
All right, we have no invocation this morning, but if you please stand and look me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A public comment. Seeing none, approval of the agenda, I believe. Everything is on the agenda as needed. I would like to add time. If time allows, another executive session for non-elected personnel, just to get an update on a couple of things. So with that, I would look for a motion to approve this week's agenda.
Just, uh, do we have a or one already scheduled executive session?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Next is our consent agenda that contains our commission meeting minutes from last week, uh, April twenty ninth. Um, as well as our finance directory view.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, so we do have payroll this week. Um, check date is Friday. The total is one hundred and eighty-one thousand, six forty-nine thirty-four. So a little lower than than normal. My credit cards was very limited this week, four eighty-seven seventy-three. It was pertaining to EMS. For paying the city of Effingham water, um, office supplies and medication. The total for this AP run for tomorrow, May seventh, is sixty-nine thousand, five eleven seventy-two. What happened?
Thank you. Next is commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell.
I don't have anything to do today.
Okay. Commissioner Noel.
It probably isn't well-known yet, but former county commissioner Bill Putoff died yesterday. Uh, he was a four-time, uh, elected for four terms, probably one of the longer-serving commissioners that's been in the county. He's also relative. He's my dad's first cousin. So, uh, he's, uh, been out of that for quite a while, but he's passed away at age ninety-seven and he'll be missed and there's no plans yet. He just died yesterday evening, so I'm going to announce that.
I have a few things. So today is our tax sale, um, at three o'clock at Memorial Hall. Um, we have our second public forum for Atchison County Lake feedback on May fifteenth, which is next Thursday at seven P M. here in the commission room. Just wanted to say thank you to Care Radio for our first Fridays. Um, I had feedback last week that it is working and people are hearing our updates. So that's, that's exciting. Um, I had a Northeast Kansas multi-county health board meeting last night in Horton. Um, and then just wanted to say congratulations to the Atchison County Conservation Board. Um, they held their first annual ag day last Wednesday in Effingham, uh, for all of the fifth graders in Atchison County. So they got all schools to participate and, um, I was lucky enough to have a fifth grader. So I attended the event and it was wonderful. They, they knocked it out of the park. Their present, they had presenters that were great. The kids were engaged and, uh, just for their first, first event, it was wonderful. So looking forward to, um, more years of of that. So. Um, next is presentation of petitions and proclamations, um, working on a possible Atchison County beef proclamation, um, that it's beef month, um, in May. And the state did that. So there'll be more info on that to come. New business, we have, um, Representative Rivas. Our Kansas State Representative is here, um, to discuss legislative updates with us. Come on up. Thank you for coming.
Sure, I've been trying to get to all these different meetings and it's been interesting. This is part of the information that I've got.
Thank you.
Pass up here. Thank you, thank you. You guys probably have my contact information. I'm losing cards here. If you want to have someone hand in case a constituent wants to call me. So I'll just leave some there. Right, that needed, but I gotta use these up. Y'all paid for your tax dollars, so. You make a good bookmark or something, right? I had one person tell me that their card was torn.
Yeah, it looks like it got caught.
Yeah, yeah, I had to explain that. Just read the top of the card. I I can do some of those too. Yeah, so I have an update. Um, I got a few notes here and just to bring everybody up to speed on what's going on down there, what what's been going on. Um, I don't know how close you all followed, but I think you follow it pretty close, it sounds like. So it's usually a ninety-day session. Have this year, we were done eighty-nine days. So kind of broke the cycle of going along. So the, uh, the difference this year, which I didn't anticipate, typically things don't happen much on Monday. Monday afternoon, maybe, and nothing happens on Friday. And this year it was, uh, all day, every day, Monday through Friday. I had committees that met on Monday, Wednesday and Friday at four in the afternoon, three-thirty. So I was there no matter what. And it's Tuesday, Thursday. So my committees I'm on are financial institutions and pensions, which handles all the banking, uh, savings and loans, capers, all that kind of stuff, uh, Health and Human Services, which is a lot of issues with that Medicaid, um, state hospitals, it's the whole list. Uh, and then social services budget and we we control about forty percent of the, uh, part of the budget we really can address. I mean, if you look at the state budget overall, it's, you know, it took like twenty billion. And so it's, but it's like, those are federal taxes that run through. It's everything, but the actual budget that we really have control was about ten and a half. And about about forty percent of that, we control our budget committee. So that that was been, that was pretty amazing. We, uh, we do like all the disability issues and, uh, nursing homes and state hospitals and and all kinds of home healthcare stuff. I mean, all of that. So, um, pretty, everybody calls it the sad committee. But it was really good. It was really good committee to be honest. So, um, anyway, with all that said, um, this year there was a hundred and sixteen new laws passed, the second most in the last twenty years. There were eighteen vetoes and fourteen were overridden. Within the budget, there were eighteen line item vetoes and fifteen of those were overridden. So there was a lot of, a lot of things that got passed that, uh, they've been trying to get passed for several years, I guess. The, the big thing was probably, um, the fact we got some constitutional amendments coming next year. These will all be voted on in either the primary or the general election in twenty-six. And some of these we got passed, um, how these work is both houses have to pass it with a two-thirds majority. And these are all called concurrent resolutions. And so then that the governor doesn't have to sign off on these or anything. So, uh, these will be on the on the ballot. Uh, one is Supreme Court Justice elections. So right now they're appointed by, uh, nominating commission of lawyers and a few laypeople, but, uh, there's a real move to to change that. So twenty-two or twenty-three states do it this way now. A larger number of the rest of them do it by, uh, the federal model. Which is like where appointments or nominations are made, then they're screened by the Senate and then the governor picks. But this will be direct election. So that'll be on there. Uh, Kansas, this is cumbersome, but basically it's Kansas Legislative Revision Review. Wait, Revision and Suspension of Administrative Rules. Lot of word salad. Basically it gives the legislature power to oversee the administrative rules because a lot of times we pass laws and the agencies will interpret things how they want and make regulations that sometimes are not what the intent was or maybe a little overreaching. And this requires it to go back through legislature. We have to approve some of these things if they're if they're contested. So all right, probably a good check and balance. Another one is the right to bear arms legislation, but what it is, is to, it's to include ammunition and components. Apparently those aren't part of the right to bear arms issue. So um, and then those are probably all be in the primary. And then in November, you only have three constitutional amendments on an election. So there's five coming at us. So there's three in August and in November. The citizenship voting, you have to be a U S. citizen to vote in any Kansas election. For federal elections, that's true now. But the Kansas Constitution just says person. It doesn't say citizen. So there are some municipalities and local entities that feel differently about letting everybody vote. So this makes sure that everybody has to be a U S. citizen to vote in any election in Kansas. And then the other issues are the property tax cap. This did not get passed. There's two iterations of this going back and forth. One is a three percent cap, which got changed to four percent and the Senate's pushing the House, we're pushing for a rolling average. Um, that was a battle back and forth right there at the end and it died. So I'm sure that's going to be the first thing we get. Uh, next session, try to get that resolved, try to find what works because it gets complicated with formulas and how it works. So.
Is that rolling average, something like the ag land?
Similar.
With the, so you're, um, appraisals or go on to that schedule and then it's an average of those.
Right.
About eight years.
Yeah, they were talking six years for for this.
Yeah.
And then in talking with a few folks that were involved with the negotiations, I I suspect what we'll end up with is a blend of both. A rolling average with a cap built in, which leads to a piece of people. The thing is, if you go back, except for the last three or four years, and I didn't check because I was told that. So if you go back to about twenty, you go back twenty years. It's averaged about three percent anyway. So to put a cap of three percent doesn't really change anything, you know, so. But anyways, those are the things that will be coming in. Be a lot more on that because we don't vote on that for a long time.
I could see the, that average on the, like you said, six years would maybe take off some of the edge of like when, was it Windup County or Johnson County and when they had the new appraiser came in and all of a sudden their appraisals went up a hundred percent in one year. Well, at least then it would temper that because it would have to be phased in over.
Right.
So I think it would take some of those spikes out of it.
Yeah, and there's, there's, uh, there's talk about different exemptions like for a certain age and there's all kinds of ideas been talked about. So that's, that's kind of what's going. Uh, disabled vets, we did pass, and I didn't put that bill in here, but we did pass a a freeze, I think it was a freeze for a disabled vet on their property tax or something, something like that. I had to look up the details, but we did, we did do something for them. Um, the committees that you're on, you know all the details. So the rest of them, you're just trying to keep up. Uh, something for this group to know, uh, I've met with KDOT, uh, twice now. Discussing a lot of, a lot of issues and through the, uh, county. Roden Bridges, the current KDOT director, Secretary Reed is very pro-county. He had a dinner I went to, he sat right by me. He made a big point of Kansas has a great highways. We're in the top five in the country usually. He says, we don't want to lose our ground there. We have got to do more to help with these county roads and bridges. So he, he's real big on that. He's kind of a foreign guy. So hopefully that, that mood, that doesn't hurt. Um, but anyway, I've been talking about some of those issues and so we're trying to, we're just, we're just getting started, but I'm going to try to find some things to maybe help us there. Um, the other thing on that is they have what they call, um, what do they call those things? Local, uh, consults, I think it's called local consults, but that's where they come in and have a town hall meeting. So the one for Northeast Kansas is in Topeka. So on my Zoom call, I said, I never thought of Topeka being in Northeast Kansas. I said, I'm in Northeast Kansas. And so I made my point because I think they just got kind of complacent. But the ones on the Zoom call, they were all kind of laughing. I said, no, no, I know where Topeka is, but I said, if I go to Topeka, I'm going, I'm going pretty far southwest of my house. So making the point, they never get up here. So I don't think I'm, they're, they're willing to do a smaller meeting up here somewhere. But when that meeting gets set, it could be probably going to be in the fall. I really want to get a bunch of us down there and I've been talking to some Donovan County folks too. So, um, I'm working on a couple of ideas for that. But we need to show up because I did find out whoever shows up, they pay attention. And so if we need to find twenty-five, thirty, forty people to go down there, literally get some grain producers, get some, uh, cattle people, get some in industry here in town, different things like that, a good cross-section. I think it's been important. So keep that in mind for down the road. So on this handout, I just listed a bunch of things I used for my town halls. Most of, most of these are the ones that were veto overrides. A couple of things aren't. So the front page is about the budget. But if you flip the whole thing over on the very back, the last few pages I just were add-ons, that's just a summary of tax relief that we've done over the last few years. And inside of that is kind of a summary on K twelve education. So that last page is kind of a tool summaries, okay? Otherwise it's, uh, just less than a bunch of the bills. And I can address any certain bunch you want. This, this is a copy of the budget. And this is just line items. So this, this is what we behind every one of those numbers is a whole lot more data. The stuff. So now through that, uh, the governor had a proposed budget. We had a proposed budget. This year, for the first time, they went back to what they did like fifty years ago and the legislature actually starts the budget process. And what they've been doing is the governor would submit one, it's nineteen fifty-seven, the governor started submitting a budget the third week of the session. So you don't know anything until then to get started. And so last fall, the legislature put together a group and they started meeting with agencies and starting going through the numbers. What they learned from that, there's a lot of details that we never get to. Which leads to a lot more questions, which led to the formation of an oversight committee to start somewhere kind of codes called codes, just like Doge at the federal. We don't have Elon Musk, but we got folks that are just trying to sort this out. A lot of state employees have come forward and said, hey, we could do this better. And so there's been like good, good interaction on that. But the, the governor, um, was requesting a lot more than we gave her and we cut two hundred and ten million dollars less is our budget this year's two hundred and ten million than it was last year. There's about, I figured it's about six hundred million of obligations that we had to continue into this budget. That won't be there the following year. That could be some new things come up, but I think we have a pretty good shot at getting it, getting, getting it down more. So it's, it got, it's really grown. I mean, it's like the part we controls about ten and a half billion and back in the, like two thousand and eleven or twelve, it was like eight or something like that. It was a lot different. So, uh, we, we need to work on that. So a little summary on the budget, basically, uh, we were able to had a lot of things and and just fine tune things more than anything. Um, on the second page of budget continuation, that's just simply a bill that says if neither since the legislature and the governor, no matter who's in party, or if you can't make a decision and you keep doing the battle like they did a couple of years ago. The budget you're already in just continues on. So government keeps working. There's no shutdown. And, uh, the budget will continue on and, uh, it also has, uh, limits on any borrowing because the federal funds come in kind of randomly sometimes. And so you have to use your other state funds to subsidize other accounts while you're getting the money. And so it's, it has rules about that and it, uh, it says we can fight for a whole year, but the budget, the government, government will still work. So I think that was probably good. The tax relief bill. Okay, how this works? And and it, it's can be a little complicated, but basically if, 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 if life's good and taxes are coming in very well and and we're ahead of revenue estimates and funds are good, in August of the, the, the year, we see how the funds are rolling. If we're ahead of projections, we're ahead of, ahead of our budget rate, we can lower the income tax. And so it can go from being the two rates. Let's see, our rates are five-two and five-five-eight. You don't take them down to a flat four percent. So for the next year, the income tax rate would be four percent. If it's a really good year and there's a lot of money coming in, then that happens, then the next thing it goes to the corporate income tax will be at four percent. And it was even, even a better year than you think. There's one more thing and that's the privilege tax, which is something banks and financial institutions pay. It'll cut that for them. So it's tiered that way to individuals, then to, um, yes, it's right, yes, businesses and then to the bank. So, so the point is the better we do and the more efficient we get, the lower we can make your taxes. It is set up on a, on a scale that way. So I think that's going to be really good. Um, it's, it, it's complex when they get simplified on here, but boy, seeing all the details, it was like, so they've got it figured out, but we'll see how it works. And if it's a bad year, the taxes stay the same. So it makes it sound more accountable the way I look at it. Uh, property tax, so estate is officially out of the property tax business as far as estate. We took our one point five mils completely off of the out of the tax. Um, I can't remember if that, I think that starts this fall for the next year. Um, so we're out of that. Um, we did not get the other things done with the appraisal thing, the property tax relief, but we're hoping to get that done next year. So that helps. Um, unless there's questions on the childcare and foster care, I'll just skip over that. And then I think, uh, elections is probably something that applies to you guys a little bit more. Um, so the transparency and revenues underwriting elections, Senate bill five. This was something people called, uh, oh, did you blow those too, Mark? I'm sorry. I meant to hint to you guys. People call that Biden bucks, which is probably not fair. But it's where federal money gets sent to groups to help. I guess encourage people to vote and most of the time it became partisan. So in Kansas, uh, now it's a matter of it's got to be approved by the state. It's got to be, uh, nonpartisan, just general, get out the vote kind of campaigns. And, um, that's, there's, there's a little more control over that. So it's going to be state approved. Um, and then there's an exception for our security funds. So protecting voting systems, um, make sure we're safe and secure in our elections. So anyway, it should be, should be over transparency. Economic development, uh, the sandbox legislation. Uh, this is really interesting. And again, it gets into the weeds of basically if you're trying to start a business, especially something of any size, especially with, uh, emerging technologies and A I. and all these things. You can spend a fortune just on permits and all these things before you get started. So what Sandbox does is just say, hey, work with the agencies, don't do all that. Let's, let's see if this thing's going to work and let's find out really what it needs. Because sometimes people are really paying for more than they needed for permitting and for environmentals and all that. So, um, there's a, there's advisory committee who oversees all this or, so I, I think, I think this is a good thing. Apparently a lot of industries like this, regulations, regulators like it too, because they still can't keep an eye and it's kind of a test drive before you take it down the road kind of thing. But, uh, I'm anxious to see how that goes because it sounds like it's opening up a lot of doors. A lot of states have done things like that. It's worked. Uh, public health is another thing that kind of applies to y'all. So the whole thing with COVID and everybody being told what they couldn't, couldn't do and all that. Um, this now says they, your local health officer can recommend against it. They can't ban like public gatherings. So there's still that. Still some authority there to recommend it and to have oversight, but it takes away some of that power to, um, dictate like the classic was always you couldn't go to church, but you could go to the liquor store. I mean, those kind of comparisons. So so trying to make it a little more fair. I think in a true emergency or through crisis, most people are going to figure it out. That's kind of a reaction to all the COVID stuff. And there were several ag-related bills. The ag industry didn't have any really big hot issue. But, uh, uh, the one, the water is a big issue more west than here, obviously. So you can read those. It's pretty much, uh, just doing things to help with that. There's things, utilities, just as far as, um, give more time for landowners in the K C C. To work out arrangements for, uh, leases and things. But the big things on transportation, there's, uh, you, uh, electric vehicles. Um, they're going to have to start paying a fee uh, to, to help with the gas fund because obviously they use the roads too and it'll be gas tax. So in essence, that's what that's talking about. Uh, they're also heavier and cause a little more wear and tear on roads. And there's also things like guardrails and things aren't designed for the weight of some of these cars. And so it's, I saw some videos were pretty amazing. So.
Did you see that in Willbunsee County? I remember three or four years ago, they were bequeathed or they had a grant for three electric school buses. And as soon as they got them, they realized they couldn't run them on most of their county roads because they were so heavy, they wouldn't, they wouldn't scale the bridges.
Yeah.
Well, then I heard about a month ago, they've taken them out of service because they have so many brake failures. And there's a couple of other things there that they're not safe, that they've just pardoned them because they can't use.
Well, I saw they quit using, but I didn't know what the deal was. Okay.
That was on the news story.
Yeah, wow.
My sister works at Willbunsee County.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. So it's kind of just a general overview of some of the things that went on. Um, and there's a lot of other issues. Any, any certain ones you want to ask about?
Oh, so going back to elections. So it looks like you guys passed H B twenty-two. The Friday special elections will be held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in March. And then, uh, same day as a primary or general.
Right. The push was to have just on the primary, the general.
Yep.
Stop all these special elections.
Yeah.
And then, um, once we got into a little more into the weeds on it, I guess, I was on the, I'm on elections, but Pat Proctor, who did an awesome job with that. They, they needed to have one spot somewhere in the spring to have an election. And so they said it's going to be there. So.
And they specified.
Yeah.
So I, I, if, if, that's a pet peeve of mine. I harped on this with you and you said, get a hold of Pat Proctor. And I did. And I didn't get any response, but this is a response. This is a
Yeah.
You know, there must have been a, a lot of outcry to, to fix this.
Yeah.
Because you get special elections all over the place, just randomly thrown out there. And this at least gives people that, that votes uh, an idea, you know, what, when can I expect these elections?
Right.
So that's, I, I love the fact that they did that.
Well, the other thing we did in elections, we got rid of the three day after the election day. And so it, it was interesting and not the exact numbers, but I'm going to say around three thousand statewide. There was like three or four thousand ballots way back years ago before that, before they did that, they would always come in after election day. And so then they said you have a three days after and now there's still three or four thousand ballots that come in after the three days. There's always some people, you know, and the, the challenge on that has been that the post office doesn't postmark everything. And the, the people opposed it, get rid of that three day and said, well, you can have the post, the, the mail, the post office, they'll, they'll postmark if you ask them. And that's fine. Then we got a postmark, but they're having thousands of ballots come in with no postmark. We saw it here, canvassing elections. If you don't have a postmark, you don't know, you know? So, um, and the other concern was, is what about the overseas and all this stuff? Well, those are, I think, I think forty-five days. I think it's forty-five days they go out, you know?
I think that's right.
I think it's forty-five days ahead of time or mandatory overseas. So they have plenty of time to get it and vote. But it was interesting because to see if you give somebody, if, if I told you, if you told me to get something done and I give me three months to do it, well, in about two and a half months, I'll start looking at it, you know, that's, that's how bad some people are, you know?
The same people are waiting for church every single day. You know, you wait till the last minute and it's like, well, I'm good to three days after. I'll, I'll, I'll do it on the second day after.
And they could drop it in a box here. I mean, there's always get it here.
I've, I'm kind of afraid where this is going because of the feedback I'm getting from local mail service has been that it's getting slower and slower and slower. I know it's, it's taken, uh, well, on different committees I'm on, they send mail home to mail it to different jurisdictions. So it don't like go to Kansas City. They want it to go to the Topeka because it gets, they have a better success rate. So when you have people that are
Yeah.
positioning where they're mailing things, that's just kind of a status of what's, what's going on. So it kind of frightens me on the election thing that, you know, there could be a lot of people wait till the last minute and it's going to definitely come in way past the deadline.
Yeah.
We have about a minute left, um, and just wanted to ask one quick question. Um, it kind of comes and we're going to lean on you for some assistance. Uh, we're kind of spitballing, brainstorming the idea of the best, uh, path forward for our sales tax to offer some relief on some of our services. Uh, we haven't really identified a clear what that looks like. Um, but we would love to have your help as far as getting us in front of the legislature next year to get something on the ballot to, um, look at a sales tax to help offset some of the costs, whether it's EMS or, or what direction. Definitely EMS is a need. Um, you know that. And so um, just wanted to put that on your radar.
Yep.
And then follow up with, uh, House Bill twenty-two seventy-five with Speaker Hawkins with the county sales tax permissions. How do you think that's going to go?
So on the first part, as far as getting a sales tax, but on, uh, we just have to work with the advisor's office and get that on there.
Okay.
And that'll be, it's, it's House Bill two zero zero four. It's the same. And that'll be, it's, it's House Bill two zero zero four. It's the same, the same statute is there. It's the same, it's like twenty seven pages long. It's the same, same statute. Just every time we either pass these, just add more to it. So, so it's one actions in there from before. So it's just a matter of getting the language in there for that. You guys just need to say, you're in what your language is, what your goals are and, and so we can frame it correctly and uh, then let the voters do what they do. Regarding that bill, um, I think, I don't think, I'm, I'm pretty darn sure we're gonna be looking at that bill this next year about maybe looking at how to get the state legislature out of the business of deciding to, to give you guys approval to do a sales tax. I don't know what those guardrails are gonna look like. There may be maybe up to the first two percent or one and a half percent or some number. We're out of it. If you go over that, maybe they still want to go through the legislature. I don't know. I'm not sure that's gonna end up it. But uh, I, I've already been asked to be involved in that. So.
Okay, perfect. Sounds good. Do you guys have anything else for Representative Rivas? Thank you so much for coming and giving us an update and we will definitely be in touch.
Yeah. If anybody uh, listening has any questions, um, reach out to me. I'm not hard to find. I'm, I'm on the internet. Go to Kansas Legislative webpage. It's got all the contacts for every legislator. And um, and otherwise they've got it here. So. All right.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you too. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next up, we have Jackie Prejean and Mary Jane Sowers with Amelia Earhart Festival twenty twenty six budget request. Come on up girls. Um, I know we have brochures upstairs, but we brought, brought one for you all.
Fresh ones.
Fresh ones. Yeah. Just out of the packet.
Thank you.
Yeah. There you go. You're welcome. You're welcome. So yeah, um, just always asking for money. It's part of my job. It's what I do. Um, so just few comments and then I'm happy to answer questions if you have them. Um, you know, since nineteen ninety seven, the festival's been uh, an event in, in Atchison. And I know when it started in nineteen ninety seven, I don't think that committee had any idea that it was gonna continue. It was just about celebrating Amelia's hundredth birthday. Um, we have currently over a hundred and ten businesses that contribute to the festival to make it happen every year. And that includes people that send twenty five dollars every year and it includes foundations that give twenty five thousand. And every one of those is critically important. Um, when one stops, it makes a huge difference in what we do. Um, the festival uh, has never been about making money. The festival has been about putting on a, a festival for not only our county people to enjoy, but um, to bring other people. It's to celebrate Amelia, but it's also to celebrate community. Um, and, and I think it brings our community together really well. Um, it also though is an economic driver. Um, if you ever want to talk tourism, the festival is tourism. I don't know that other than uh, two thousand and four, when we did the Lewis and Clark celebration, I don't think there's ever been another time when there's that many people in town for a weekend uh, at one time. So um, a lot of businesses in town will tell you that it's their best weekend of the year. Restaurants do well, gas stations do well, hotels do extremely well. Um, in fact, I, we were at the hotels yesterday looking at our rooms and, and they're getting ready to start waiting lists already. So um, it's a big deal and it's important to the community. Um, this year, a few of the things that I'm really excited about, uh, we've kind of added some Thursday night things the last couple of years. And so um, this year Amelia Rose Earhart, um, who probably most of you are familiar with, she's been here, I think, just about every year. She's a former Pioneering Achievement Award winner. She flew around the world just like Amelia did. Um, she does um, art pieces now. And so she's going to do an exhibition called Shadow From The Sky at the Munchnik. And so we'll do the opening for that on Thursday night. Um, very excited about Friday morning and Lori Gwen Shapiro's new book called The Aviator And The Showman. Uh, it's a Viking Press book. It will be released the fifteenth of July. She will have the opening in New York City and the next morning she gets on a plane and comes here. So we are the, really the first place outside of New York City to, to be able to present that book to the public. Um, it's a story about Amelia and her husband and about George, a lot of, of uh, different things. Um, she's worked on it for about four years. So done extensive research and uh, I think it's gonna um, be very, very interesting to read. She's let me read just a few little snippets of it. Uh, so she'll be here Friday morning out at the museum uh, to present that book. And um, we're, we already have interest from one of the Kansas City TV stations. So I think we'll, we'll um, engage some, some local media in, in that. Um, Friday night's concert, Neil McCoy is going to be here to headline. Uh, he was out at the lake years ago. Fabulous entertainer. Early ticket sales have been great. Uh, so we're excited about that. And then um, to open that concert, um, Noah Anthony, who is um, actually Noah Banowitz, but his stage name is Noah Anthony, is going to open for us. And I think that's, that's kind of cool to have a local kid that's, that's doing really well. He's starting to spend quite a bit of time in Nashville. So I'm excited to have him open for us. And then our Pioneering Achievement Award this year, I'm excited about her. I think it, it uh, branches us out to uh, maybe a whole different crowd. Tara Dower finished the Appalachian Trail in record time. She went almost fifty four miles a day walking that trail. Um, she talks about how she'd lay down for fifteen minutes and then get back up and, and run and walk. Uh, so um, we've talked to Lauren at the Y about the, the people that do the run on Saturday morning, trying to uh, encourage a lot of um, people that are involved in, in hiking and running. Um, she also runs hundred mile marathons, which in my mind makes her insane, but but, but uh, there are people that love to run. Uh, I'm not one of them, never will be. Um, so that's just a little bit about what we're doing this year, a little bit about background. Happy to answer any questions. Obviously, um, we need the funding. Um, and I, I've, I've made this statement to a few people uh, when we were out talking to people about giving to the festival this year. When we started nineteen ninety seven, there are businesses that have given us money every year since nineteen ninety seven. There are many of them. The problem is that some of them gave us five hundred dollars in nineteen ninety seven and they're still giving us five hundred dollars. So uh, as you can imagine, that money, um, uh, you, you deal with budgets every day. You know, that money doesn't go near as far as it did. Our move down to the riverfront helped us a lot to curb expenses. Um, but we still have a lot of expenses. So the budget for this year is about three hundred thousand dollars to do the festival. So in the process um, of trying, we, we made a special plea to a lot of our donors and um, multiples have come in by giving us just a little bit more. And again, I, I don't expect anybody to give huge amounts again, but um, we just ask if you can just give a little bit more, every little bit will help. Um, like I said, those, to me, those twenty five dollar checks every year are just as important as, as the others. So um, so that's what we're here for. We obviously need, need the county money. We need um, every donation we can get to make the festival work. Um, it's kind of it.
And what is the amount from the county that you're asking for this year?
Um, well.
For twenty twenty six?
You know, we used to get seventy five hundred all the time. Um, and then it went down to five thousand. Um, honestly, I, I mean, I'll be happy with anything. I'm, you know, I'm a good beggar. I'm happy, happy to have anything. Um, obviously five thousand or seventy five hundred will be huge to what we do. Um, it all helps. And, and I, I think the, the county money has always gone to help pay for the fireworks. We do a, um, the fireworks themselves are sixty thousand dollars. And uh, that's something that everybody enjoys free of charge. So um, that's kind of what we've always put um, both city and county money toward because we feel like that that shows that you're contributing to something that everybody can enjoy free of charge. The only things we charge for, we, the luncheon, when we do the Pioneering Achievement Award, um, there is a luncheon. So we ask people to pay for their lunch. And then obviously the Friday night music also has tickets. So.
So you guys have any questions?
Question.
Did see there's a new commercial on TV with the Kansas historic places and it is like been the first couple of seasons.
Yeah.
I just noticed it right off the bat. It's like boom.
Yeah, she's right there. It's awesome. Uh, the state's been really good. Um, I used to always say when I was at the chamber that sometimes for the state, the northeast corner of the state stopped it to beep it. Sometimes. Yeah, sometimes. Um, I do feel like the museum opening has helped us a lot. Um, and, and the star bond, you know, having the star bonds for the museum. So they, they notice us a lot more now, which I think is very helpful. And, and they've done some great ads.
Reviews on the museum there. Tremendous.
Doing really well, doing really well. School groups almost every day right now. Which is awesome.
I hate someone throwing their about our fireworks. Um, and Jackie can go further, but right now, um, the.
Oh, that, that's right.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, that's okay. Yeah, we, um, last year, USA Today nominated us, nominated us as one of the best places in the country to watch fireworks. And we finished at number three, which is not too bad because the two ahead of us were like Detroit and uh, Chicago, I think. Um, so we were nominated again this year. We are in the last week of voting. So um, if you want to go to the Amelia Earhart Festival page and vote for us, we would love to see that. Um, the last week, they don't tell us where we stand. Um, so, but two days ago, the last time we saw, we were number three again. And I, I can't remember the two that are ahead of us right now, but um, so we're voting on that and it goes just, I think it's another six days. And then we'll find out. That's been tremendous publicity for us as well. Um, anytime you've got something like that, it, it gets you more regional and then even national publicity with USA Today. So USA Today loves us. Um, they did the museum last year was one of the best new museums and we ended at four, which again is great when you consider you're up against New York museums and, and big city Sandy, San Francisco one, I think, finished ahead of us. So um, and what that shows you, I think too, is that we have good following on our social media because that's how you get the votes is social media. So um, tremendous people in town and, and the region that helped us share and, and get, uh, we got votes from all over the world. So which is exciting. Yeah.
You have any other questions?
Well, just, so the budget is three hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when it's all said and done and uh, all the receipts are tabulated, where, where do you end up?
I like to end up with just a little bit of money left. Um, and that's why I would say I want just enough to start the next year. And for the most part, we've done that every year. Last year was really tight. Um.
Okay.
We, yeah.
In the past though, you've come either at that or over that, you're saying. So, okay.
Uh, really close. Last year was really close. Uh, in fact, we waited, um, we have one major donation that comes in after the festival because of the way they do things and that helped us finish um, finish in the black. So I mean, it's really tight. And this year I'm, I'm really concerned about it this year because things have gone up again. Uh, and we, we've cut some stuff to try to, um, we've cut some things that people won't notice to try to, to stay, keep that, keep the budget just a little bit tighter. Um, and, and again, um, thankful, my mom passed away and I listed her as a, as a memorial and we got almost two thousand dollars there. So that helps too. Um, it, it just, uh, like I said, every, everything helps.
Sure.
Everything helps. It's, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate the time. Appreciate. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Yeah, thank you girls.
Be that.
See you later. We have some time until Carol's inside the restroom. And I think that's actually a little attention coming, the uh, sooner or.
Um, I believe her first.
Didn't say anything about not being here.
Okay, wonderful. But it's not on the agenda and I had this sitting out because I meant to ask when Commissioner Reeves was here, because I have a working document by him that he gave us on the Hawaii Trust. What is our role in that anymore? Are we?
I'm out of it.
Okay, we're done.
We are, I have no financial ties to it. And the cap.
We are, the courts issued its order modifying the the trust. We are no longer beneficiary of the trust.
Right, so are we, and we don't, we're not involved in anything anymore, like. Cause.
We're we're not, not anymore than any other member of the public.
Okay, wonderful. That's what I wanted to make sure, because I still have this document in in my things and I just wanted to know if I could. I think we.
I mean, the proceeds are still to go to public purposes and as set forth in the the court's order and so. We have an interest, I guess, in making sure that's the case, but.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
So that has been completely, I mean, the court has approved it?
Yes.
I didn't realize that it'd been.
Yeah, I don't.
Approved.
I hadn't either. Mine did it earlier when this review this took it. But you want to do your consideration for me?
Love to. So this goes along with the, this purchase order. Goes along with what the maintenance director was trying to get completed with the electrical panel and plumbing issue that was uncovered. I asked him about how many more there was gonna be because they just keep kind of coming up and apparently it's just when the vendor decides to send the invoice. So he thinks there's about four hundred more dollars worth of work that has been done, but we don't have the invoice for yet. So um, because it kind of seems like we're just, I'm coming to you for a purchase order of two hundred dollars and one hundred dollars and this one's for a hundred and thirty one dollars and eighty eight cents. So it it seems silly um to have you guys approve a purchase order for that low, but because it's being paid out of the reserve fund, the board controls the reserve fund, so I think it's important for you guys to approve it. Since it's that, that's kind of what we're trying to build towards and and everything and so this is to Kerrigan Lumber for white caulking for the renovations. To make everything back like it's supposed to be. On repairing the wall for a hundred and thirty one dollars and eighty eight cents.
And let's for a motion um to approve the purchase order as presented by our finance director.
So move second.
Moved in second and all those things.
Say aye.
Aye. Thanks, Mark.
Yep, so I think there'll there'll be maybe two or three more invoices, but I was told no more than four hundred dollars total.
So there's still money from that ARPA to cover this?
No, no, this is, this is just. Reserve, right.
Reserve, that's okay, yes.
All right, so in keeping on with time, I'm gonna just, um, Mr. Henderson, our, well, actually we better stay on task because I know people are looking at our agenda. Um, we'll just wait and see. Do you have a contact for Karen Wilson being on our board? Do you have a contact for Karen Wilson being on our board?
Yes.
I just didn't know if she's in or out or.
There's someone here.
Oh, perfect, that's her. Morning.
Morning.
All right, we have Karen Wilson, Northeast Kansas Area Agency on Aging with her twenty twenty six budget request.
Okay, morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Pretty good, how are you guys today?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to discuss our budget requests. I do have it officially. I do apologize for not emailing it to you. I just realized that today.
No, it's all good.
So as we have for several years now, our request is gonna be the same. It's two thousand six hundred and thirty seven dollars. And with that, um, that goes towards our match requirement for the Older Americans Act and with those funds, we support in-home services and nutrition services in all of our counties. Um, in Atchison County, it's Project Concern and Amberwell, they get the majority of them. The OAA money that's tied to these match dollars. Last fiscal year, we did provide about a little over seventy eight thousand dollars to Amberwell and a little over a hundred and forty thousand dollars to Project Concern. Do you have any questions for me?
I can pause there.
Do you have any questions?
What was the Amberwell figure again?
Seventy eight thousand.
How does that work with Amberwell? What, what are we, what are they receiving or how do they utilize those?
So so what happens is if somebody is interested in in home services, which is um homemaking services, which is laundry, um cleaning, those types of services, or attendant care services, which is help with bathing, mainly bathing. Attendant care is the hands-on stuff. Um, so we arrange for and coordinate those services and then the Older Americans Act dollars pay for those.
So you coordinate?
Yes, we do the assessment to determine they're eligible. And then we um, we have case managers that go into the home and visit and determine needs and then write the plan of care. And then that goes to Amberwell. To authorize those services. That's for those two services, yeah.
And then I guess generally, do you, does that generally stay local, those services that provided, or is it not necessarily?
It goes out for bid every um, two years. Actually, we're hoping to get them out yet today. Our fiscal year starts October one, so um, we'll have, we could have different providers. We do have interest. We've just, Amberwell or Atchison Hospital, we've always had a contract with them. Uh, the twenty plus years I've been with the agency, but it does change. I mean, we do have a provider out of Saint Joe that does have some clients here in Atchison County. I don't know the exact number, but these are the two big ones. The meals are all through Project Concern. Um, again, it goes out for bid every two years. I'll be honest, nobody's ever responded to want to take over meals from any of our current providers. It's just not.
Just struggle.
It's a struggle to make it with what's there. So yeah, there's not really a big competition to get either of these programs.
Being on the board and we're currently starting building project and one of the uh things that's uh been brought to our attention is it's very there's a lot going on and people don't realize what or the agency does. It it's, it's in Hiawatha, it's viewed as being in Hiawatha, but it's for, how many counties?
Seven.
Seven counties. So uh, there's so many things, it's it's hard to explain to people because there's so many different uh, programs that are touched upon and and funded or uh, you do assessments for and and things like that. If you can uh, highlight some of those at this time.
That's one of the things we've really learned with the building project is we are definitely the best kept secret out there. Nobody knows we exist until they need us. But yeah, in addition to these programs, again, this is because I'm asking for match for these programs, which is required, but we also help people sign up for Medicaid, so we help with the Medicaid applications. We help with SNAP applications. Um, we do uh, the senior health insurance counseling for Kansans, that's helping individuals select and enroll in their Part D prescription drug plans. In some counties, we provide the transportation. We don't here because Project Concern already does it. Um, but we do that in Jackson, Washington and and Brown, so it's, it's just very different. We have a pet food program. We have.
For this elderly people that have pets and which is.
Right, that they, we learned a lot during COVID about social isolation and the benefit of of pets, so you know, we've helped with pet food and some veterinary things because there's some assisted livings that won't let you have your pet unless it's spayed or neutered and those types of things, so. The funding for that's limited, though. Trying to, trying to build that one too, but so there's lots of different we kind of guide the the direction. We have a VA program that's very new. So we're learning that as well, but yeah, sometimes even if it's not something that we do direct, we help them make that contact because there's some things you do have to go through social security for. You do have to go through your managed care organizations, but we guide them.
Facilitate.
Yeah.
So quick question on, um, because you had referred to yourself as like the best kept secret. And and with the new uh, building and different things, like I feel like just what you rattled off there. I know there's a need and I've heard that and I feel like, um, especially being part of Senior Village for so long and families don't understand or, you know, need help with that. How, where is the visibility here locally that people would know that? Like, how do we get the word out to, because we don't have a brick and mortar here that people drive by and they're like, oh, you know. How can we help or what should, what should we do to?
We're, we're working on that and I would be very open to some input on it. Because, and we talk about doing, you know, public awareness campaigns, but we have to be very careful because our funding is the same as it's been for a long, long, long time and the the last thing we want to do is to do a big thing and then have this influx of people and then start wait lists. That is kind of a very touchy thing, so. Yeah, we're really working on getting that out. Um, you know, like our providers. Amberwell calls us all the time, you know, we work very well with the clinic, can't think of their new name.
Always.
Yeah. You know, Project Concern, we talk to them on a regular basis, the, even the home health departments, even a lot of the agencies that we don't have contracts with, we work with all the time. Um, one thing I didn't mention is we do the nursing home pre-admission screening. Everybody that goes into a nursing facility has to be assessed by our agency before they can be placed in a nursing facility. So we have contacts with all of the nursing homes. And a lot.
People finding holders or who are communicating.
Yeah.
Right on.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, they're starting a capital campaign and that was part of the, the, it's like introspective, it's like our what's his name, um, I can't think.
Oh, Bob.
Yeah, uh, he's going like, you know, how to to get a grip on, to explain, especially in counties other than Brown because they're located in Brown County, you know, and it's, and the name, you you know, it's, it's address Hiawatha. Why would someone in Atchison County be excited about this? But this is a regional office. And there are these things that are being funded or uh, uh, supplied. Facilitated by this agency there that, and it's very hard to, there's not just a one line answer to anything or to explain it. I mean, it's, it's very detailed.
And it's a very fluid, it's very fluid. I mean, some weeks we don't have a lot of requests come in and then, you know, one day we'll get a call from a nursing facility that needs four care assessments done. You know, it's this ebb and flow of things and everybody's like, well, how many clients do you have? Well, unfortunately, people are moving into nursing facilities and people pass and people are coming on and it's very much a moving target. And while our fiscal year is October to September, over half of our programs run on different fiscal years. We have a state program for some of the same services, in-home services, it runs as does transportation on the state year. You know, the insurance program, it runs April to March. I don't know why these things are this way, but so it makes it very challenging to come up with these nice numbers. Because obviously, Shikit Counseling is very busy during open enrollment, which starts in October and ends December seventh. So we spend probably most of our money in that short window. But there's people aging into sixty five rapidly, so we do have them year round, but the, obviously, it happens in this little and then you're trying to manage your money the rest of this. Right, and.
How many um, employees does your agency have?
We currently have about twenty. About half of those are in our transit program, so we have um, three vans in Holton. We have two vans in Washington and then we have five in Hiawatha.
And that's been increasing. I mean, that's been more and more popular to see transportation.
Yes, yes, there was a new program in fifteen. Um, and we started with this Brown County and then with the support of the other counties that didn't already have public transit. We went to Jackson and then a few years later, we went to Washington, so. And we're always open to new programs and so we're always watching and seeing what's out there and unfortunately, we've lost a couple of programs in the last six months.
So I guess for anyone that's listening that, if you've got questions, this is a great kind of a one-stop shop and if you don't offer that, you can probably get them to the right, right place to go or who to talk to.
We're definitely not, we don't have all of the answers, but we can help you get to the answers. And it's, you know, especially when we're training or or visiting with new individuals about things, it's you ask a question, I'm gonna ask you a question back because it is trying to get to the right you know, where you live, what your resources are, all of these, all of these things come into play, so it's we get a lot of calls, what can you help me with? Well, what do you need help with? And, you know, kind of trying to to figure that out. And some of our programs are age sixty and over. to figure that out. And some of our programs are age sixty and over. Um, transportation is not. Medicaid applications are are not. So those are, we do that for all ages, even though aging is still in our name because that's what we were founded at fifty whatever years ago. So but we're, we're trying to, you know, stay on top of and be relevant and you know, this, this is where we started, Older Americans Act, and this is still the one that requires match from all of our counties. So.
The transportation, um, where, where are those located? The, the vans?
Um, Hiawatha, Holton and Washington.
That's the actual, but then like Project Concern has transportation here, but that's not ran directly.
That's not through us.
Yes. So the different counties have different. Yeah, as we say, I was trying to think how uh Atchison County folks your, your, your folks, District Two and Three, how they benefit from from those or do they, do they?
They can. Um, one thing that we do that Project Concern is not doing is we do Medicaid rides. So if someone has Medicaid and they have the option of transportation, sometimes we will get those rides from the Medicaid system. Um, we have a statewide portal that they refer rides to us. Um, I don't know how many we currently have in Atchison County. And also sometimes if there is a need for a ride, especially a long distance ride, um, and Project Concern doesn't have availability, we will take those as well.
So you said there are seven counties that make up the organization?
Yes.
So Brown, Jackson, Atchison.
Donovan. Nehmahal, Marshall and Washington.
And how is the match amongst all of them? Is it calculated based on population?
Yes, population of sixty plus.
Got it. So we're all contributing pretty much the same.
Yeah, I think the lowest one is like seventeen hundred dollars for Washington County. It might be nineteen hundred. It's a little below two thousand dollars, but their total population is less than six thousand people in the county. So.
Got it.
It.
Yep.
And the state hasn't yet updated to the twenty twenty census, so I suspect that's coming soon. We've talked about it. Um, so maybe next year we'll be using the twenty twenty census and there might be a little shift. They're usually not substantial. Um, but Atchison is one of the counties that is not losing as rapidly as the other counties are losing population. That makes sense.
Yeah, kind of been holding our own.
It's interesting, you know, Jackson kind of is increasing very slowly. Washington is definitely still losing population. Just.
Do you guys have any other questions for Karen?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good day.
You too. Thank you.
All right. Next we have Catherine Sparks, Community Corrections Director with the Third Quarter Community Corrections Update.
I came in last week and got signatures from you guys. I don't have as much to discuss this week, but I still have some updates. Um, so currently with our fiscal, we're on track. Um, I won't read all the numbers, but I have them all sitting here if you guys would like to see them. Right now, I project us to have some unexpended funds. Um, we do have some things such as carpeting that we could replace in our building, um, painting, things like that that I will potentially look at doing with what we have left um after what we're projecting to have left after every, all our necessities are paid for. Um, we do have about fourteen thousand that we were given by KDOC this last year. It was to be used for an additional FTE. Unfortunately, fourteen thousand does not cover the health insurance and everything that goes into an additional FTE. So I am planning to send that money back to KDOC. Um, outside of the financial, right now on the adult side, we have a hundred clients signed. Forty-five of those clients are considered active, active meaning they are in the community, in jail or in treatment. So we're still working with them on a regular basis. Um, and then fifty-five are inactive. That can be clients that have absconded from probation. Uh, clients who were sentenced but also have a prison sentence to still do things along that nature. Um, our success rate per quarter one through three right now is eighty percent. Um, previously, our success rate was about a fifty-four point two percent. So we have definitely seen some increases and I contribute that a lot to um our case management. We've been working a lot on our, our case management and how we're working with clients and then also um our programming that we're offering in office. Um, in regards to programming, we currently have had twenty-seven of our clients go through programming. Thirteen were successful, three unfortunately were unsuccessful. That was due to a revocation, potentially for a new law violation. Um, we currently have thirteen in programming and one that should be starting here soon. Uh, I do not have any new updates on the funding formula. And right now for our FY twenty twenty-six grant, we did have some revision requests. Um, I believe you sent a letter, but I'm not sure because I heard some places did not receive the letter. Um, but our, and I can give you my original copy here, but our request for changes was um updating our percentage, one of our percentages. Um, we do list parent project as a group that our adult clients can go through. Um, but it's offered through our juvenile services and our adult clients can qualify and benefit from the juvenile services grant on that. And then um they wanted additional copies of my MOUs with the Second and Twenty-Second Judicial District. So if they'd have liked to have a copy of that letter, I can give you one. It had that you guys received on the letter, but I've heard that other places did not receive it. So let me see what is attached here. But I've already submitted those changes. Um, none of them were drastic in any measure. Um, on the juvenile side, we currently have ten clients under supervision. Seven of those are active, three are inactive, or three inactive are either because they're at a PRTF, which is um, a mental health ti- type of location. Um, or they're in KJCC, the juvenile lockup. Um, with intakes, we've had forty-one total intakes over the last three quarters. Eight of those are law enforcement drop-off. Seventeen are C, thirteen were NTA and three were police protective custody. Um, for programming, we've had our new grant now for two or six months. And that's six months, we've had forty-six referred, eighteen successful complete, six unsuccessful, six not enrolled, three parent refusals, thirteen active in programming and ten waitlisted. We do have that grant for an additional um, six quarters. So we, it doesn't run out until October twenty twenty-seven and our plan is to serve a hundred and fifty. So we are on track to continue serving those youth. Um, we did have some juvenile revisions as well. I'm gonna assume you guys did not receive that letter. So I will provide that one to you and we discuss these in my J-Cabin and my adult board. Um, but just some basic changes. Uh, I needed to add a gender and ethnicity. Uh, we labeled one program for FY twenty-four and it should have been labeled for FY twenty-six. Um, through this grant, we are wanting to have funding for electronic monitoring or surveillance for kids that come in to potentially avoid them going to um detention and instead being able to keep them in the community if possible. So we're wanting to try and help with the cost for that. Um, there was some confusion. They thought we were wanting to run the electronic monitoring. We do not want to run it. We just want to be able to receive an invoice and help cover the first, the startup cost so that families can do that. Yes.
I'm listed as the Adult Advisory Board Chairperson.
I know, and I'm not sure why because you weren't on the grant.
That's all that too.
So.
Okay, I just want to make sure that if that's something you were aware of or.
Yeah.
I mean.
Um, I've, unfortunately, and I don't know why they did that because even on my grant, you're, you're not listed in FY twenty-five either. So I am not sure why they listed you in that way.
Okay. Uh. So you know, if it was something that needed to be corrected.
Yeah. Um, and then we had our success rate. They just wanted to understand a little bit more about how we were able to achieve our success rate. And that was through a lot of communication and getting our programming out there. Um, originally I had received guidance to not list any groups on this grant application because I was not funding my groups through that. And then I guess at some point that changed. Um, there were several of us that were under that same umbrella. And so then they wanted groups added. Um, they identified our unspent funds and then they wanted us to change um allocation on our budget to be listed under a different grant. So that I completed. You guys can have that as well. Um, updates on the juvenile side, I, other than what I've already told you, the only other thing I have is uh legislation that did go through. Their KDOC is attempting to find out if there was a cut on our juvenile side or not in funding. If there was a cut, each agency is looking to lose whatever they did not expense out in FY twenty twenty-four. Um, I do have my reservations, not reservations, but I have worked it into my budget to make it all work, but we are looking at that potential cut. Um, other than that, uh, we did get approval from our boards um for July twenty-second to close our office and do a probation and parole recognition activity with our staff, really working on team building um, between probation and parole. So that's what we're looking at doing. We're gonna do a lunch. Uh, we're gonna do a team building activity in the morning, lunch and then an escape room or something like, just something fun to get them out of the office and still have that team building aspect behind it. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Guys have any things? All right.
Thank you.
So do you want to go anything else? Or we have some time ahead of schedule? Well, I'm trying to stay on task because we've received so much feedback. I just don't want to go earlier than. So we have Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge Superintendent, Proposal for Engineering Services for Bridge fifteen dot four dash N dot six.
This is the off-system bridge that we were awarded last fall, North Lancaster on Jewel Road, about three and a half miles. Uh, this is by Schwab Eaton. And uh, for the amount of seventy-three thousand dollars for engineering. This will not be uh inspection engineering. Uh, upon some middle of the field check plans, which will hopefully will be done here in May is forty thousand dollars, one fifty. Then we have office check, then they get forty percent, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred. And then upon final plans, they get the last of three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. This is normal. Uh, we will have a uh, the inspection will have to be put out and we can uh choose who we would like to do the inspection when that comes, but that will be an additional fee. So is there any questions?
Only question I had is, is traffic control plan needed in that area? Like, I guess, does each job different?
Well, so normally when we close the road, we let everybody know. And uh, it's like Ottawa Road. Uh, when, when we close, close the road, they can turn at uh, two thirtieth, or we make sure that there's a way that they can get around. So uh, not, not really.
Then to do that?
No.
Okay.
Oh, no.
Because it was checked under the plan specification and estimates and I guess.
Well, I will, we always talk, we always talk.
Okay.
On what, what we have and what we don't have. And then what they'll do, see, and then when they, that also uh, when it's bid out and we select a contractor, then they'll know what has to be done for the traffic control, like what signs we want set up and where and all that, so that the county doesn't have to, to do those things.
Wondering that. Do you guys have any questions? Right, so let's see. All right, so I look for a motion to approve the contract for engineering services by consultant for project number fifteen dot four dash N dot six in Atchison County. Um, this agreement entered into on the sixth day of May twenty twenty-five by and between Atchison County um and Schwab Eaton. Do I have a motion to?
So move.
Moved and seconded. Follow those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the farm leases in the bed. This for the farm leases?
Yeah.
We have Pat Henderson, County Counselor with um the potential quarry at one five, one five, nine, three hundred and eighteenth road, but also the Mead Road um ag lease agreement. So.
Well, let's start with the second one because it's uh much simpler. Um, the county purchased twenty-five acres of land from the city. As a proposed or planned site for a new road and bridge facility. Uh, that land has been farmed for several years by Mr. Armstrong. He's also continuing to farm the land that the city of Atchison still owns. Uh, this proposed lease is uh nearly identical to the lease that he has with the city of Atchison. Uh, including the, the payment terms, which I believe are a hundred and sixteen dollars per acre, cash rent on the four, twelve and a half acres, which is half of the, the property. He's already signed it. And it's there for your consideration.
Is, do we need to predate this? Because the agreement states April.
I don't think it's necessary to change the, change the date on it. The uh, he hasn't made the initial payment. He's to make the payment two parts, once at planting essentially and once if, and then the other half that's part of this. He hasn't moved that payment yet. We haven't signed the contract. So.
So the date you want on this?
Oh, you, you can certainly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Just a real quick question on the write-up entry. Um, is his, what is his plan? Because we had talked about like that dedicated area on the north. Um, because if we start our project to get to that.
You can still come in off the highway just past the overpass, just west of the overpass. There's a field entrance there.
Okay, wonderful.
So he can still.
Field enter off seventy-three.
That, or he can go up by the railroad tracks.
Okay.
But yeah, he can come in off of.
Just making sure he has access.
There's a, there's a field entrance there.
Okay, perfect. All right. So I would look for a motion to allow the chair um, to sign the cash farm lease agreements as presented. Um, to sign the cash farm lease agreements as presented by our county counselor. Um, between the Board of County Commissioners and Daniel Armstrong for twelve and a half acres. Um, that Acheson County owns at Mead and Seventy Three Highway.
So move. One second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. All aye. Passes three to zero.
The, the second involved discussion about, uh, land use regulation and. The discussion about a planned quarry that may be opening. And. The, the law in, in Kansas has been established fairly clearly. Counties do have what's known as home rule authority and that is just a, a generalized right to determine your own affairs. Local affairs to be determined at a local level and that's, that's by statute. Uh, there is also specific enabling legislation for land use control. Uh, commonly known as planning and zoning. And that is the, uh, universally recognized best mechanism for regulating where. And how certain land uses are allowed to exist. Uh, the concept being that like land uses should be, uh, typically bunched together. And that all land uses should be in some way harmonious with. The surrounding neighborhoods that they're in. That is, you, you don't want to have a hog rendering plant right next to. A new subdivision of houses typically. And you don't want industrial uses next to residential uses. The, the question that was asked though was about how to, whether it's possible or how to accomplish. Uh, some land use regulation involving, uh, one specific use, a quarry. Uh, without using the zoning process. And I don't think that's possible to do. I've been county councilor for fifteen years or so. The, the board has never had an impetus for dipping its toe into zoning. Uh, we have some very rudimentary land use regulation involving floodplain development. Uh, but nothing that goes, uh. Nothing that's any more specific than we don't want you building, we don't want anybody building things in the floodplain. So, um. I don't know of a way for, for the board to accomplish a moratorium on. A specific land use without going through the process required under zoning. Uh, you know, I, I did. Was, was informed actually last week about Brown County having fairly recently adopted. A fairly rudimentary set of zoning regulations. I did not yet have a copy of. What they did, but they went through the process of appointing. A, uh, a committee to study and come up with a comprehensive plan for what, uh, development would look like in Brown County. I understand they have only one zone, that is, they don't have, uh. They, they don't have commercial zones and agricultural zones and residential zones and industrial zones. They, they just simply have one. One zone. Uh, and. I, I don't know the specifics of it, so I'd be speculating about exactly how they, they handle that, but. Zoning is the time tested and the only way that I know of that would be, that would be likely to withstand legal challenges. To, uh, to land use regulation. And without it, I, I think that it's, uh, quite likely that. A regulation could be looked upon as being targeted or discriminatory, which leads you to problems involving. Takings. And discrimination claims, which I think you would want to, to stay way out of. We, we could talk really in more detail or a lot more detail about what that planning process looks like. But as I mentioned, I've, uh, have, I've had kind of the feedback that the. Commission hasn't had a lot of interest in pursuing the land use regulation. So if, if I'm misreading the room, let me know.
You're misreading. You're misreading this commissioner here. I, I think in limited use is a benefit. And, and the way Brown County did it. They specifically targeted. A use and, and I think that's why they went with one zoning area. Uh, because it just made sense. It, it, it's, it cut to the chase and it gave them the ability to do what they wanted to do. Um, so, um. I, I can write a whole list of reasons that zoning would, limited zoning would help. Uh, so, um, my question is, um, after the fact, so after we have a. Uh, contract in place. In this case in particular, this, does the zoning, even if we were to come up with something targeted, how does that? How does that look legally? What, what is?
Well, the fact that there's a, a contract in place, I, I think would be a factor a court might look at if there is an allegation that, uh. That, that this was targeted or something like that. But the, uh, planning goes to the use of the land, not to what somebody thinks they might do with land in the future. Um, so, a- as long as it's not an existing use. Um, the, the zoning process would still.
Okay.
Um, could, could still regulate it, even if, even if something had been played. And. As part of that process, uh, I, this, this came, we, we know a lot more about this now than we did five years ago. Because several, uh, wind projects and renewable energy projects came up and. Uh, there were several counties that. Moratoria on those specific projects and it's been long enough that those have gotten through the courts and so. At least the initial wave of those have gone through the courts, so. So we, we know that those do. Stand up to. Do stand up to a legal challenge. One of the things about. Land use planning and. It is that you want to avoid emergencies and so this process of having a, a group of. Community members that come up with the plan and help, the, help present a plan to. The board that the board will ultimately approve or reject. It is a process that takes a little time, but it also is, uh, very. Determined to get input from the public about what the public wants and what, what the public wants to see as, uh. As, as part of that comprehensive plan. So if there is a, an interest in doing it, I would suggest getting started with, uh. Getting a, uh, a planning committee. Or planning commission, I guess is the, the phrase in the statute started. That, that's the, the simplest way to, to get things started. And it's a necessary step under the Kansas statutes to having comprehensive land use regulation. I, I'd also add, we have, this is the first time we've had, uh, a citizen come forward and ask about. Having. The county weigh in on preventing some land use. We've, we've had it come up in the past when towers were being built. Um, the people had concerns about towers being built really close to boundary lines and. You know, if the tower fell over, it would actually damage. The neighbor's property, not, not just the, the owner of the tower's property. Now those, those types of, uh. Issues have come up in the past and then there's been concern about, uh. About wind farms and whether that's something that, uh, we wanted. My understanding is that we might not be in the. The corridor that's the most efficient for wind farms, but. Uh, as technology improves, that may change.
Where do you land on that Eric?
I, I don't know. If I was representing. People that have talked to me over the years about zoning, I would just have to say no. I do, I do understand your point, uh, Jamie about. There are a growing list of things that. Could, uh, zoning could. Um, maybe help or, or regulate that would, would, that's come up through the years and, and we haven't went there because of. The feedback that we've gotten from constituents. If we wanted to explore. Especially a targeted one concerning this. I mean, how long would it take to get, even if best case scenario, something. On the books and voted in and by that time, wouldn't they already be further down the road? The opening of quarry?
Yep, excellent question. I think if you are genuinely interested in pursuing and setting up a, uh. Uh, the planning. Commission to do the study, I, I think you could have that done in less than thirty days and have a moratorium, but have it be part of. Kicking off the, the system of. Doing the initial study and the initial analysis of the county and what land uses you want to have.
Could there be? Something filed like an injunction or, uh, something that would keep them from. Going into that until we have something like it'd be limited to ninety days or something that would keep them from. Uh, starting to make improvements and then, uh, while we pass something.
Well. Just real quick, do we, do we even have? Permission to use the roads? Do we have, have we had any kind of request from?
That was going to be my question. You were reaching out to their attorney. Um, did you get a response from their attorney? And also the road regulations, if their date is May twenty fourth, we don't have anything in writing. And I can tell you that's a major concern for is the investment we put on Morton Road, depending on what direction they want to go. I mean, that could be devastating.
It, it is a, a major concern. Um, the, uh. They're, they're, they have changed council from when, uh, when we were communicating with them. That was two years ago, probably, maybe more. So no, I have not. Only to the extent of discovering that I had to log. I, I didn't have the updated information, so.
So what are our, um, with our road regulations? They, can they legally begin operation without a road agreement in place signed off by us?
Uh, this was before, uh, before I was involved, but. When the only other quarry that I'm aware of opening in the last twenty years, when, when it opened. Part of their licensure requirement was that they have a road, a road use agreement with, uh, the township. Uh, because that was on a township road. Um, and then it became a county road, the commission agreed to. Eh, accept that as a county road. So. I, I don't, I was not able to find anything in the administrative regulations that require that specifically. That require a, uh, a road use agreement between the licensee. Uh, and the owner of the road in order to get a license. But my understanding is that it was a requirement. When, uh, Ham opened their quarry, that they have a road use agreement.
But who, who put that in there?
K D H E.
So would. Does that mean that all licenses are, are subject to that for any new quarry or is it just that one?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that. As I said, there, I couldn't find anything in the Kansas administrative regulations that lists that as a requirement. That doesn't necessarily, I don't know whether that's a K D H E policy or not, not their policy. But. We don't have any control over. Whether or not they grant a, uh, a permit. I mean, as far as I know, we haven't been asked. Nobody, as far as I know, nobody from the county has been asked about. Our position on a, a new quarry opening.
So. Could they actually start? Um, their infrastructure. Um, do, I, I don't know what all would entail for them to get to the point where they would start actually mining, uh, raw. If they put in their driveway scales, maybe a building or, you know, I'm assuming. Would it's out of any other quarry in the country. So they could do that probably before they even ask for a license.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
So even if the license, if they got to that point, they could have. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in infrastructure involved before they would ask for a license and then.
I, I wouldn't think it would go in that order. I, 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 I don't know. I've never opened a quarry.
Right, but I, you know. By, you said default that the other quarry had a licensure requirement. You would think that they would be here asking us. For licensing.
Wait, right, which is why we had those discussions as I, as I said, maybe two years ago with. Uh, with Betis. About what are your plans and their, their responses? This is sometime way in the future. We'll talk about it if it comes to fruition, so.
So if the county had a concern about road use agreement. Would that be something that, uh, could possibly pull this off for a little bit, trying to figure out? Uh, if we, if we, we, we know we need one, but would that be something that we could use? Because we need to, to find out, we're not, we just don't want you coming in here and, and, uh, driving on roads and crushing culverts and all these things.
Well, people generally have the rights to use the roads as long as they are, uh, operating within. The requirements of the law, that is that they have vehicles that are. Allowed for travel, they have, uh, licensing if they're, you know. Tags, if they're allowed, if they're required to have them, uh, that they're within the height and weight requirements, et cetera. And as long as they, they meet all of those things, they don't even have to be citizens of the area to use our roads and there are a lot of people that. Use our roads to drive through that aren't citizens and are just passing through. Uh, so yeah, they would be allowed to do that as long as they're.
They didn't have over width or overweight.
Right.
And when they come into that, then it would be up to the county to okay whether those loads could be used on our routes.
Correct.
Wait a minute. Why would it be up to the county? They can just go ahead and do it. They're not going to come in and get permission if they're, as long as they're using things in accordance with how anyone else would use.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about over to eighty five, five.
Okay.
They're bringing in the big youth trucks and they're bringing in, that's what I was talking about.
Absolute, okay.
Yeah.
I was misunderstanding that. I didn't want there to be some other thought.
No, 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 not just normal traffic. It's when, when it becomes where. No, not just normal traffic. It's when, when it becomes where they have to have a permit to come down the road.
Um, I know, I know other agreement with the other quarry. At least for a while, we were getting so many tons of rock per year, weren't we?
From, well, we were getting, we get a little bit of a kickback. And we were supposed to get some rock to work on the road, but of that quarry, as we all know, that agreement was never officially signed like it was supposed to. And we have pushed and pushed and pushed to get that signed. And we've hit a, a stone wall there.
Several, several stone walls.
Yes. We've tried it to the point where we don't even know who to contact anymore. Yeah. But we do have a haul route. And we are doing a pretty good job of making them stick to that haul route.
So do they have any pull over the people that are hauling out of their quarry to get, to make them adhere to a haul route? I mean, if you've.
They've talked to, they've talked to the, the.
Are you, are you talking about the existing quarry?
Yes, yes. I was just wondering how that's, I mean, if, if we're gonna consider anything, we've got to see what, what we've got, what works, what potentially could work. Or if it's another failure, I mean, we need to identify that as like, well, it's a good intention, but it don't work. We can't make the current ones.
We have, we have improved that dramatically from what it was before. There's not, there's many trucks going out south as there used to be. But I'm not gonna say that it's.
Well, I'm sure it's not perfect, but you know, we're at, I know at one time they're, we're going south and they're, they weren't supposed to ever.
Right.
So, you know.
That would, you know, uh, I don't know who, who would we have police that? I would think that the quarry would be number one. Talking to their, or talking to their customers saying, hey, these are the roads you're supposed to be using.
There was also a measure for, they were supposed to provide dust control on that road.
Yeah. And then this is, this was way bef- way before I was here.
Sure.
And that was part of it. But then there were supposed to be some maintenance that was done on the, the road going through Cummings, which that was, that was done. We've got that done, but we still don't have a signed agreement.
Right. And, and to be clear, that was before I was county councilor as well. And so they had been operating with, we had a, a draft of an agreement that I think both parties recognize as this is the operative agreement. And we, we have met on at least three occasions to try to get an updated agreement and, and get it approved. Uh, we're kind of getting off the topic here, but they've had, Pam has had people change positions and I I, I don't, I, at one point, Commissioner Quinn, I, I met with Joe and I and with a couple of representatives from Ham and we, we talked about some changes to it and those were, I think, agreed upon in principle, but they needed to review them and that's where it stopped. We went to, to, to him for approval, but I, I think we're getting off the topic of well, whether you wanna, whether you're interested in, or yeah, whether you're interested in pursuing steps that might possibly lead to a moratorium on new quarries.
So I am, I am not interested based on a hundred percent of the feedback of uh, my constituents in the rural parts of Atchison County. There is not one person that has said, yes, I, I want zoning and this is why. I think that this is a perfect first example that we're just gonna continue to see, uh, with what's happening with wind and solar and, and different things. Donovan County made M S C News, uh, their planning commission came to the, their county commissioners and their county commissioners rejected, uh, the recommendations of the planning commission establishing regulations for solar energy. Okay? So this quarry is just one example that I think we're gonna keep seeing. So I think that is a good time for us to start having the conversations of educating or sitting at the table. I don't think rushing a thirty-day planning commission is the, the right way to, to do it. But I think this is a good example of, we can't help. I mean, we've gotten emails after emails from people asking, telling us all the things that were reiterated to us last week of health and safety concerns. And what I'm hearing today is we don't have anything we can do to assist in, in helping with that. So with that being said, a lot of questions are being brought that I don't have the answers to of okay, if the county commission can't help in stopping this effort, is there any guidance we should be giving to these people that are worried about the water table and the well that they use for daily drinking to dry up, depending on, like all the what ifs, right? Like the pollution of the equipment affecting their livestock, the integrity of their houses. Like, is there a benchmark that they should be doing to protect themselves? Because at the end of the day, the liability wouldn't come to the county. It would come up to this company, correct? Like affecting like the list of all the negative effects.
Wouldn't have life of, of something a private land owner does on their own land.
So if there were negative effects as outlined last week or in some of the concerns to us, that would be for them to take up with, with that company and like just basically docu, like keeping a.
Does anyone, I'd like to hold on a minute.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not how I interpret it. They haven't broken ground. The lease is between the company and the individual. As far as how we handle it, what I understood you to say is that we do, as long as it was, as long as we get it put in place. We have, we can still affect it. Is that not?
If you're doing zoning.
Well, what you said, yeah.
Yeah.
I, 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 I think you're both correct. Yes.
No. But you just said that we couldn't affect it if we.
If we're not zoning. Sorry. Maybe I didn't, like Mike.
If we is to some kind of limited targeted zoning, our counselor says it will. Yeah, we, we can affect that. I understand your, 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 your point, your take on it. I get it. But let's not, you know, let's, let's not overshadow what we're hearing.
No, yeah.
Saying it would, it could possibly help in this particular case. And we know that it could help in many other cases going down the road. So I, I'm gonna stick on that and I, I, I think it would be a good thing that we, we need to, I think we need to explore it. If nothing else, we need to explore the idea. I guess I'm gonna be the split on this. And maybe that's what my suggestion here is gonna be is what if we proceeded as if we were going to do that, got the commission, we would explore whether this is what we want.